He will not be attending tonight's meeting. So we have two items on the agenda. I'd like to remind council, once more, to refrain from asking questions until staff presentations are complete or until they give us a point in time which is comfortable. Go to 3.1. You'll receive an update on the proposed amendments to the city of Goodyear sign ordinance and provide staff with comments and guidance concerning the sign regulation within the city. Steve, Caressia, Planner 3, will present. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. Do have a PowerPoint here, presentation, and I'll go through this rather quickly because I would love to get to your questions and comments here. But this is just what we've done. We've been working at this for a couple of years. We met a couple of years ago, got some good direction from council. Then we had a significant Supreme Court case come down, and that kind of threw a loop into everything, so we were at the regroup and look at things. But staff and our legal consultants, and we have been looking at everything, we kind of have a draft ready, and this is our purpose tonight, to bring it before you. And this is where we are now, council work session. We've gone through P&amp;Z several months ago, and we went through meetings with business community, also solicited comments from the wider stakeholder group, and now we're ready to bring it before you tonight. And what we'd like to do is provide you an update on what we've done so far, seek your comment and guidance, and then go over what we're going to do next. And what I'd like to do tonight is just go over the overall changes, really the high level changes, to bring those to your attention and definitely get your questions and comments. And overall, one of the main things we did was, we needed to address the Reed case, and we feel we've done that with this draft. We think we've got the regs, the uniformity added, consistency, we've built that into it. We've addressed the commercial, non-commercial speech. Definitely don't want to favor one over the others. Definitely learned that from the Reed case. And then we also want to look at any area where we could add opportunities for signage for our business community and our citizens. These are the 15 sections of the new sign code that we're proposing. Three new sections, and mostly those are to address Reed. We have the last three. And we'll start with number one, the purpose. Really not much change here. Again, just to address Reed, the speech, the commercial and non-commercial speech. Two definitions. I'll jump down to the removed section, and this is because of the Reed case. You can see we removed several definitions relating to garage sale sign, open house sign, political sign, real estate sign. Basically, we're calling the sign by their content, and that was something we didn't want to do. So we wanted to take those out. And the new signs were just going into their function. That's how we want to mostly look at our signs, by their function, not their content. Then these standard sections, more administrative sections, really no major changes here. Exemptions. We want to reduce the number of exemptions. Again, back to that uniform and consistent application of the sign code. And then we also want to clarify, if, you know, if it's just routine maintenance, replacement, required relocation, no permit. So we clarified that section. Our general sign regs, really not much change here. Just with the, clarify with, we maintained, no private signs in the right of way. That's a carryover from our existing ordinance. However, even though we have that carryover, we always have our First Amendment, our right speech in traditional public forums, and we also have state law which allows, which prohibits cities from removing political signs in a right of way. Sign area and height, again, not much change here. Carryover from the existing ordinance. This is probably where we get into more of the changes. Residential, commercial, or industrial districts, and how, that's how we kind of classify all of our signs, residential, commercial, industrial. And then the sign types allowed in those specific zones. And in the residential districts, basically, some of the changes, we removed reader panels out. We allowed them for certain uses, but not others, so that was an unfair allowance of a specific sign type. So we remove that out of the residential. We allowed, there's a possibility for more monument signs for non-residential uses in the residential zones. And the main example of that would be a church. They're allowed in most zones, all zones, really. We moved the subdivision signage. This was a cleanup. It was kind of another off to its side. We moved that into this section, since most of our subdivisions are residential, so we brought it in here. And we're also allowing larger subdivision entry monuments. Moving over to commercial, there's the potential for larger signs, higher height, the 12 feet, larger sign area, the 48 square feet. Allowance maybe for more quantity of signs. Instead of what you've usually seen as the two per street frontage, now it's one per driveway. And the separation was reduced from 330 feet to 150 feet. So per driveway into a commercial center, that seemed appropriate, that monument sign would be, that would be a good spot for a monument sign, so we added that provision. Directional signs and internal monuments, that was something that we looked at. Businesses, especially those in a larger center, or if they were farther in, they were looking for, how could we have signage? And one of them would be directional signs at the entry from the public street. Those are a little smaller. A larger sign would be the internal monument sign. So if you had a parcel, a lot farther back in, typically you'd only have a monument sign at the street. Now, if you had a landscape island or something, that was appropriate. That's where you wanted to have an internal monument. That person could have a sign inside the center. Again, just to help with wayfinding, whether, you know, pedestrian or you're driving in, that you can see that business, know where to go to reach that business. We also updated it for menu boards. A lot of, we're seeing the double drive-through lanes for a lot of drive-through restaurants. Our code didn't speak to that, now we do. And then for industrial, same kind of changes, the larger monuments. Probably the thing I'd like to point out here was, something that council asked for, which is larger directional signs for truck traffic. So for the larger industrial centers, we have a taller, larger directional sign that hopefully those businesses can use to direct the truck traffic. Temporary signs. We group those by those requiring a permit and those not requiring a permit. Not requiring a permit, the yard signs, the sidewalkers, the window signs. Again, we want, those are the main signage types that folks are going to use for maybe a political message, ideological message. So we want to make sure that the sign code didn't infringe on that freedom of speech there in that regard. Signs requiring a permit, let's look at, let's say, the grand opening and special event sign, that's one that there was a change. The current code allowed you 30 days for grand opening, and then 10 days for a special event. And if you had a special event, then it had to be no signage for 30 days, and then another 10 days. What we did was just kind of consolidated all of that and said, whether it's a grand opening, special event, whatever type of event you have, we're going to allow you 30 days of signage four times a year. So it went from basically 60 to 80 days of temporary signage for business, it's now up to 120. So that was a good increase for the temporary signs, especially for the small businesses. And there's also no downtime. If a business wants 30 days, 30 days, you know, all 120 straight for whatever reason, that's their choice. Or if they have just, they want 30 days and a couple of days, and they want another 30, that's totally up to that business. It's just 120 days per calendar year. That's really the cap. And then again, the political signs in the right of way, that was, that's a complex one that, how we are proposing to address it is, we did away with that category, because that had a special, it was allowing a special treatment for this specific type of sign. So it was a content-based regulation. So the thought was, maintain that prohibition of any sign within the right of way. However, come election season, signs go in the right of way. There's a state law which prohibits the city from removing it 60 days prior to 15 days after the general election. So the city will not be removing any signs in the right of way. Private property, again, that's another story. People have mechanisms for signs on their property. This was just in city right of way. Conference assigned packages, not, we had looked at that. Was there anything we had to change because of the Reed case? And what we're proposing is really no change. We'll continue to provide for conference assigned packages for our businesses. We'll continue to take those that are requesting deviations from the sign code to the planning commission and council. So the process you've seen in the past is the one we're proposing to keep. And then, what was called McDowell Road Business and Entertainment District, that was direction from council. This will be that area along McDowell, basically from 145th east to then west to Saraval. That will be the area where you will have the possibility for electronic signs. And that will be for those businesses that have the frontage on McDowell. And this new section proposes some conditions for it, such as, you know, for brightness and adjacency to residential. You'll see some standards we built in, but basically, centers within that area will have the ability to have those electronic message displays. Section prohibited signs, again, we didn't really touch anything there. We already had a good handle of what we needed to do here. Non-conforming and unsafe signs, not much change here, again. What we did here was just built into, because that Reed case brought forth more of that protection of speech, we just built in that the appeals and then the hearing officer, that if we did have a challenge in the future, we now have a mechanism that, all right, this is how we're going to address it. And basically, just a summary, I think what we've built into this is additional signage for businesses and our citizens, larger signage, but maintaining the quality that we've had in the past and bringing that forward to the future. Content neutrality, that was something we addressed, again, because of Reed, the consistent application of our regulations, and again, that electronic message displays, that's something that we will try here at the McDowell Road District. Then next steps, definitely like to get council feedback tonight. And then what we'd like to do would be create that final draft that we would take to Planning and Zoning Commission in May, and then back to you at the end of June. And with that, Mayor, that's my formal presentation.
This is a good one. Thank you very, thank you very much. Who would like to start? All right, Joanne, I'll let you go.
Okay. All righty. Thank you for that. Couple of, couple of things, questions from the presentation. When you said non-conforming signs versus maintenance of signs, so, so if we have signs that are truly becoming, I can't think of a better word, but saying an eyesore, you know, like, it's one thing for signs that are, that bulbs are out and letters are out or something like that, but, you know, say they're, well, if they're hanging, then I would think that would be unsafe. You know, we've had a situation in the past where hands changed from a business. If you remember when Fazoli's was here, and then they went out, and before another one came, and it was a broken-down monument sign for, I don't know that we, any of this addresses that. I know that's still a challenge to figure out. But I guess the maintenance of signs, that's really back to, the only thing I can think of, if they are falling apart in some way, I guess they're unsafe. So that's how you would describe it, wouldn't you, for code to go out to fix something, or to ask them to repair it? Is that what, am I making sense?
I would just say, what do they do? Do they, do they do that? And do they recognize that? And if you look now, if you look at the new signs and you look at some of the old ones, I think, gee, I know one right on Litchfield to the right that's kind of faded. I mean, they're old, they've been there for a long time. And we really don't have anything about upkeep or any, I mean, they, it's their signs, is that correct?
Something if light bulbs are up, but it's another if it's broken or shattered, you know.
Or just the lettering is, yeah, so.
It's not a safety.
I know, it's not.
I don't think we've ever had anything, anyway.
The, go ahead, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if you could answer it, because it was kind of.
It's either we don't or we do.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Mayor, council members, with that section, I know I've been asked in the past, you know, the main question that comes up from someone, a business owner, is, I do have this sign, and I either am rebranding or it is fading. I want to replace it. What process do I have to go through with the, with the city? And the answer is, well, if you're just replacing or changing something, then you're fine. No permit, you know, go, go do the work. It's if, oh, I want to rip the sign out and put a new one in and change everything. Then it's like, okay, then let's, we do have a signed permit and such. But the main question we get asked is, what do I need to do with the city in terms of permitting or review? And the answer is, if it's just maintenance, you know, the sign's faded, I'm changing something up, then nothing. You just, you know, unless it is, you need electrical or something, but in terms of a planning sign permit, no.
So when they receive a permit, maybe this is the way to look at it. Let's just say, a sign across the wall is individual letters, and it says Smith's, okay? And the M has, has, was hanging, and so they, they took it down because it was unsafe. Now it says Sith's. You know what I mean? And says Sith's like that for six months. Is there a, is that a, because the permit was for Smith's, is that a code way to go in and say, hey, you need to put your M back? Does that make sense? Is that then how we would follow up, being able to keep quality to a center or whatever by saying you need to go put your M back up? Does, I guess that kind of makes sense on how you would, would work that?
Can I follow up on that? I think what, what I'm getting from you is, like, if you have a sign that's deteriorating, not in safe condition, what we can go in there, is there anything in our permitting that says you have to keep your sign up to readable standard or something?
Some of ours, are pale now, the, the letters are pale.
And the letters are peeling up, or the M's falling off.
But that's.
Is that where you're trying to?
That's what I'm just, you know, we, we want to stick with, with quality. And, and so in protection of, of that standard or quality, we also want to know that, you know, we have something to go by and say, hey, guys, we'd like you to put your M back.
That the M's going to hit you in the head, that's a safety thing.
The M's down, because it would have hit you in the head.
But if the M's just curled up, what do we do?
Well, I'll move, I'll move on. When you said 100.
Help, help.
It sounds like a good way that code could go in and say, put your M back.
Here's who's going to answer for us.
Mayor, council, thank you for the question. So I think what, if I hear you correctly, it's really about a property maintenance standard is really what you're driving at in terms of replacing the M or the, a light bulb is out and things of that nature. And the way to approach that, that code would do it, first of all, planning doesn't necessarily permit the message on the sign, because we have to be content neutral. So we wouldn't permit the M, for example, but it would.
But you're permitting Smith's.
But, but we're permitting the area for the sign, not necessarily the message. And so if it's a property maintenance issue, routinely, what we do in that regard is, if we receive a complaint or observe something, code goes out to, code enforcement goes out, code compliance, rather, goes out to have a conversation with the owner, make sure they're aware of the issue. Usually in a sign, it could be an off-site property owner. We've seen that happen quite a bit. In other instances, it may be somebody that, because of the cost of repairing the sign, needs a little bit of time, and so we work with them to bring them into compliance. We don't have a strict, like, sign maintenance requirement, so to speak, but if it becomes unsafe, or there's electrical issues, or it's leaning, or it's hanging, or it could injure somebody, in that case, we are very, I don't want to say aggressive, but we're very concerned in making sure that it is safe, nobody gets hurt, nobody gets electrocuted, and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The 120 days, just to clarify, you said, so a business in a calendar year can, can use temporary signs or event signs or things like that, but a total of 120 days for the calendar year? Okay. Just clarifying that. On non-conforming, now you, you've spoken there about, oh, where is it? Consistency, I guess, is what I'm, I'm looking for. And consistent regulations, because we've heard from businesses that say, why is it that I can't do this and so-and-so's doing this down the road? It's, it's not consistent. Why is it that on McDowell Road, there's a restaurant that has two pieces of wood with plywood that, that changes a beer poster every month? Why is, to me, that's non-conforming. So, so, but they're getting away with it, and they probably have for maybe a year. So it's like, why, and that, we've got to work on that. That consistency is huge, because that really, when, when you have businesses that want to follow the rules and, and behave, and then you have other ones that don't.
Sends the wrong message.
It totally sends the wrong message, and it's not right. So we have to make sure our consistency really is dealt with fairly. One thing that I noticed in a sign that I'm not sure, you know, we, we just said, we're looking for other ways of signage for businesses, and one that just occurred to me that I do not recall being in here, there's this store I know of, that was built about a year and a half ago, and on the walls outside on the building, there are large, for lack of better description, poster windows. There, there are fake windows that are on the wall that are product posters with inside these, these clear glass doors that show your product. In essence, like, over at Harkins, you would have the big movie posters that change out, you know, they're, right, they're, they're outside, they're on the, so the store has those. And I realized that, I don't know that we described that kind of, because that is a And in, in where, you know, this building only has two of them, you could see somebody that had multiple ones going across, and you'd go, oh my God, that's hideous, you know? But that's something I don't know that we address. Or, or am I missing it? Do you know?
Mayor, council members, I know with Harkins, we did address it specifically through their comprehensive sign package, because we knew that was something that was going to come forth. We were like, let's just cover everything here. We've had some businesses want, and it's especially the drive-through type businesses, they do want those posters all along the drive-through lane. And typically, that's either been prohibited, or you would have to address that through a sign package. So there is still that opportunity through a sign package, but it isn't part of zoning, the sign code, that type of sign. That's that poster. We do have provisions for temporary banners, we do have provisions for permanent wall signage, but not that changeable paper copy in a glass case. We have provisions for window signage, but again, not that specific type of signage you're suggesting.
Gee, I'll have to talk to the honor.
I have a question on that.
It's mine.
I don't know, I don't know where she's going. Go ahead.
Would that follow with the, like, what Joanne's talking about, would that still follow, like, we see some of these businesses that are wrapped, where they wrap their windows? Sometimes when they're empty, you'll see the wrapping in there, so you're not looking at an empty window. Would that, do we have anything for that, so that they can do that during certain times of the year? Maybe they want to do like a Christmas wrap on the front of their window or something?
Health stores do that a lot, where they have large windows, people on bikes or something. I mean, you know, there's.
And if so, is that really any different than a piece of paper or a piece of something stuck on to the front?
But that's in the window, and you address 25%, right, is within the window.
Joe?
From my perspective, and, and I guess, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, as far as signs and windows and the old styles, when they used to put, what do you call, window dressings in there to get people to come in and retail, you know, when they put the windows in? To me, that's, that's a way of marketing your business. I don't have a problem with that. You know, I look at it this way, if, if it's too overdone, it's going to kill their business, you know? So the smart businessman is going to be discretionary enough so they get their message out of what product they're selling, so they can get people in the store. If they get too overbearing on it, or it looks too tacky, then they're probably going to chase people away of what they're trying to do. So I, I don't, I don't have a problem with them promoting their business. But to get back to an earlier discussion on aesthetics, you know, when the sign is approved, I realize it's not approved on contact, but it's approved on area. So you approve a certain area, and I would assume with certain specs of what it looks like. So from an aesthetic standpoint, I would like to see us, if for some reason they allow that to deteriorate, so to a point where it becomes an eyesore, that we can do something about it. Because I'm not talking about the content or whether a zero falls off or an M falls off, I'm talking about the sign itself. It's either been thoroughly faded, or it's not lighting like it's supposed to be, it's become maintenance and disrepair. From an aesthetic standpoint, it becomes more of an eyesore than it does the quality that you approved originally, then I think we should do something about that. My two cents.
Wally?
I've got a couple of questions. This packet that someone so kindly gave to me before the last meeting when we were going to talk about signs, and we didn't have time to do that, this is just a part of the sign package. It just has excerpts of certain, it doesn't have anything of, of, in this presentation. So apparently, I'm missing the most important part of that document. So I would like to get a copy of the sign ordinance complete, I guess, is what I'd like to do. Not now, but I'll, I'll show this to you afterwards. This is just the Article VII part. Okay. My question is, I have some questions from folks in the real estate industry that want to know, are they required to get permits from the city of Goodyear when they are going to do an open house from 9:00 to 11:00 on a Sunday morning?
Mayor, council members, the typical realtor sign that you see posted in a yard, that falls under the yard sign category, which doesn't require a permit.
Oh, good, good.
It didn't in the past, and we're going to carry that forward.
That would be very good, because these real estate agents will hold possibly two or three open houses within a development, and they just move their sign from one location to the other. And that would be, I would hate to burden that industry with permitting, when we want them to sell those homes so that we can get new people to move here. And my next question is, we have some signs in Goodyear, and I apologize that I'm not, I don't know what they're called, but I'm very visual. They're shaped like this. You got it? You can hardly read some of them. Are those our signs?
Talking of the ones around the roadside, that have little slats of businesses?
Yeah, they've got the, they've got the home builders and.
We've had those for a long, long time.
They've been there since before I moved here.
We requested it to be refreshed and put signage, because the stores didn't have any signage, and so we used that.
Okay.
So Christopher's going to give you all the background.
So.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Campbell, we call those the residential kiosk sign.
Thank you, yes, yes.
And their purpose is to eliminate the signs in the right of way directing people to a home builder. They can use these kiosk signs. We use a third-party company who operates those signs. We do not review the panels. It's basically up to the person renting the panel on what they want to put in there. So if they. So, if they create a design that's illegible...
Sure.
That's really up to that specific home builder, that they made that decision.
So, if our code happens to drive by and see that it's all faded, and you can't read it, and it really doesn't look good, can they handle it then, Christopher?
Mayor, council, thank you for the question. As Katie Ellis indicated, that's what we call internally the kiosk sign program, and all of those signs are in the process of getting refreshed. The city has a new graphic manual, design standard manual, with colors and so on and so forth. And we've been working with the contractor that we utilize to manage that program. They're going to be repainting those arches, if you will. And then, the contractor works with the businesses in order to ensure that their signs are legible. So, if they're illegible, the contractor can just simply go out there and peel one off and stick a new one on.
Great. Well, I look forward to some vibrant colors somewhere in this city on something, and it...
Yes, ma'am.
I know we fade out because of the sun, and I get it, but it would be nice if we could do that. Now, on the actual monument signs, when a business goes out of business, who's responsible to take that business off that sign? So, you're not turning in when you think there is a lab, and there's no longer a lab there?
Mayor, councilmembers, that would be the sign owner, and typically in a commercial center, for example, the master developer, the property owners association, they would be responsible for maintenance of that sign and taking that panel off, and then putting up either a blank panel or a new tenant. So, that would be their responsibility.
And if they don't take it off, you just call code and say, code, I've gone into this area, and there's not this business there anymore? Can they do something? I mean, there's got to be a little bit of accountability there, I would think.
Mayor, councilmembers, the sign does need to reference, you know, a user or somebody. And I think it's...
I tried to find that in my little packet, but I didn't have enough papers to tell me. I didn't know where to look. Oh, I don't have the whole thing. See, I've only got 7.1 to 7.11.
They have one year.
One year. Oh, good, okay.
If at that time, it hasn't been changed, or it's falling apart, then we have the ordinance calls for it must be removed and brought into conformance with the current code.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Yeah, you need to bring the microphone on.
I can't, I'm really having a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry.
I apologize. They have one year to bring that...if that one year passes, then that sign needs to be brought into conformance with the current code.
Okay.
So, that's either fixing it, putting a new panel up, repainting, something to bring that back into conformance.
All right. I don't know that we have any way that we can monitor that, because we don't just drive around and look at the signs, and then go into the shopping center and say, well, if this is here, this is here, and that's there. But it does help our residents if those signs are properly marked, because it's very difficult driving down. I'm going to use Litchfield Road as an example. When you get to Thomas, and you've got all of those doctor's offices and everything, this side of Village Inn and behind Village Inn, you don't know what's in there. And the only way you know is if you go and drive in there, because the sign isn't necessarily where you can see it. And I'm just trying to help our businesses be more visible and more accessible, because that's the problem. When people can't find out where a business is, they're going to go to Avondale if they can see the sign. So, but other than that, that's all I have, Mayor. Sorry.
All right. Sheri?
I have a quick question on the, and I don't remember what this is, on 7.8 reader panel. What is a reader panel?
Is that the moving sign? No? Go ahead.
We have, Mayor, council, we have the two types. We have the electronic message display, and that's obviously the electronic, the digital version. Then we have the...let me get the exact definition.
Or give me an example of one, so I can picture it. I'm going to think of what it is.
Then the reader panel is the one, usually you'll see it for the school. They got, they have the letters, and someone's out there.
Okay, where they put up with the little thing.
Or churches may have it.
Okay.
Schools would have. Almost a marquee, in a sense.
Okay. I wasn't sure what that was. I was trying to figure out what that was.
Yeah.
I like the fact we have more signage and larger signage. So, if I'm a business, and I just want to expand my sign or add one, do they just have to come and get another permit, or do they have to go do a whole other sign package? How does it work if I just, I have a smaller inch sign, and now I can have a bigger one? How does that work?
Mayor, councilmembers, that, I think that will be, as we go forward, a good question. A lot of the businesses, we do have them large centers with comprehensive sign packages. And if they're going to affect the overall center, then it's probably something we'd like them to look at the comprehensive sign package. And again, just for the consistent design and the quality of the sign that they're going to put out there. If you have a standalone business or a single lot development, then those can come in and develop according to the sign code, because they're usually not part of a comprehensive sign package. But going forward, it would depend on if they are in a center with a sign package, the extent of the changes. We've talked with people who, they know this is coming, and they've talked about signage for the entire center, redoing it for the entire center. And at that point, we would probably suggest they go through the sign package come before us. But if it's just a standalone, a single lot, then that's something they can probably just follow the code and go through permitting.
Okay.
Cheryl, then?
Just recently, I saw some, like, directional signs. It was a relatively small, much like the signs that we were talking about that were directional to subdivisions, but these were much smaller, maybe four feet instead of the eight feet that the other ones were. They were very, it was very attractive. I saw two of them, and I'd never seen them before.
I mean, half the size of the big ones that we were using?
Yeah, yeah. And they were businesses and not development.
Are they repurposed from their big signs? I don't know.
Well, no, I'm just saying, are you aware of what I'm talking about? I wished I had notated where I saw it, and I didn't. I thought, well, that's brand new. But nobody here knows what I'm talking about. Okay, well, I'm going to try and find one, because it was well done. They were very small, so I'm thinking they were very meant to be specific to...
Take a picture the next time.
Yeah, if you can stop, and I can't get out. Yeah, good idea.
Call me, and I'll go do it. Call me, and I'll go do it.
You'll go do it. And it was interesting to me, because I had had a question, is how does a business get one like that? And then I later saw it. And because we don't allow that normally, do we? Like, on a corner to say, 99 cent store that way, angels that, whatever.
They're directional signs.
Yeah, they're directional signs, but they're...
Mayor, councilmembers, we do, the current code did have, does have provision for directional signs, not used very often with some of our centers and such. Couple of our sign packages, the residential sign packages, when they came in for these large master plan communities, they had some residential directional signs, and not very large, maybe three, maybe it's something similar, three, four feet. They usually have, you know, something ridge this way, or home builder this way. They, I've seen it more often with that. The new code, hopefully, by putting it in the code, and hopefully, front and center, it is something that they will use more often, the directional signs, and then hopefully, the internal monuments, too, that they can use to kind of wayfinding through a center.
I'm going to have to read that again. I was just surprised to see them, because I hadn't seen them before. My other one was, I thought we had developed a softer, I'm going to call it attitude, which is probably a bad word on the sale signs, not S-A-L-E, S-A-I-L, signs. And when I read this information, it pretty much said, no sale signs. Is that, is that where we've ended up?
Mayor, council...
Go ahead and answer the question.
Mayor, council, that is the proposal from staff, is no to the sale signs. And part of the reason, what we've seen is, it's most, they are a good way to advertise, because from what I hear, they are very inexpensive, and they're very tall, and most people get several, and they line them up, and they find that effective of getting their business name out there. From the staff side, what we find is, they are inexpensive, they don't last very long, there's a lot of movement to those signs, they do start to tear, fade, and they don't look as good over time. And again, we do find that it's usually not maybe one, it's several of them that businesses like to use. And it's usually a sign that is placed for maximum visibility out along the road. So, we're looking at it also from an enforcement standpoint of a sign in the right-of-way along the street. We felt that we provided other avenues that we could pull back on the sale sign.
I'm really torn with that, number one. Pardon?
I like them.
I understand what you've said. Now, I'm a small businessperson, I don't have a lot of marketing dollars. I can put up a couple of those sales signs during tax season that says taxes, or because they're, you can buy them, you don't have to have them printed necessarily for your business. So, they are a much less expensive way to do it. And I was kind of surprised, because I thought we had said, when we had discussed signs before, that we were going to soften our stance on the sale signs somewhat. And didn't feel that in here at all. So, I bring that as perhaps something we need further discussion.
While you're at that point, does anybody else want to talk on that, on the sale signs?
I do.
Wally?
On the sale signs, a good example for me is on Estrella Parkway, going towards Estrella, right this side of MC 85, across from Encimate. Those businesses that are in that shopping center really have no visibility at all, hardly. And if I had a business in there, I'd put a sale sign out, but then I would know, I could only do it for 120 days in a calendar year. So, I would have to be very selective with when I put my sale sign out to do that. So, I don't know why we can't allow them, but just be sure they know they can only do it for 120 days during the calendar year, like the other signs. So, I mean, I really think we have areas in Goodyear that the sale signs would not necessarily be attractive, but we have areas in Goodyear where businesses are located, where I think the sale signs are needed for those small businessmen and women who are trying to bring traffic into their area. You know, even by Augies, you know, the back part of Augies.
Talking about the hidden ones.
Yeah, the hidden ones.
You know, where they're way back, two or three places back.
Yeah.
And we did have a business come and complain about that. And she said it was her only way. So, I don't know if there can be criteria of, I don't know this, but those businesses that are backed by one or two buildings, and I think about off of Roosevelt into those areas.
Oh, yeah.
Some of those are really hidden, and they're parallel to the main road.
Yeah.
I like Joanne's idea. Was it, you said the 20 days, or somebody said the 20 days for the whole year? I really think that we're, in my view, and just, I know I shouldn't talk before you, the rest of you guys, this was burning on me. I do think we have to have something for some of those areas, but they would be designated areas, because the other people have other possibilities, and they do not. So, Sheri, go ahead.
I was going to parrot pretty much what you were saying. I don't have a problem with them. We can limit the time, so it's not like a 365-day-a-year thing, but it really helps them, like, if it's their business season.
Yeah.
Maybe have a covenot. They have to be free of rips and tariffs, because that would make them unsafe. And maybe some areas where there's the space closer to the road, that they shouldn't obstruct traffic. That would be my only concern, as long as they're on, like, where the sidewalk goes, and then there's the area to put them over here, or over here in front of the traffic, just put them on the other side of the sidewalk. They're still right by the road, but they won't obstruct the view. I have no problem with those, as long as they're kept up.
I just don't think they should be allowed on any of the front roads, where people have plenty of access. They should be a special one to small businesses, and they know when they rent these shops or buy the shops, that they're getting it, the price they're getting is because they are hidden. They are back there, they do not have the public view. So, I would like to see us work out something that would work for those businesses. Joanne, did you want to talk?
Well, I think you're going to run into issues with this. And just like the A-frame signs, you specifically said that when you have A-frame signs, they, you gave parameters, 10 feet right from the front of your business, or things like that. I mean, you defined it. When we're talking about a business that is three buildings in, and they're putting a flag, sale-type of sign up there, that's tot, I mean, how is that any different than somebody wanting to put out their A-frame sign? And we've already said, it can only be 10 feet in front of your business.
It's more noticeable.
So, it is. But I personally think that you're going to open up problems. I do not like them, and I'll just, I'll be very clear about it. I don't like them. I think there's a better way, and I do believe, I'm very thankful that we're changing our guidelines and allowing for more signage, better signage. I think that it's the current commercial centers that we have now that weren't necessarily designed properly to allow some of that signage to go on the perimeter, so people can be seen on who's on the inside. And to that point, when we are looking, when people are coming in, new commercial centers, when they're coming in with their sign, you know, comprehensive sign packages, it's going to be on our shoulders, on your shoulders of staff, to be proactive in saying, you know, what you are putting in your center, we allow for much greater in our city, helping them, you know, kind of look at that. Because currently, the center that I'm in, I would not be able to have a monument sign in front of my building, and that's because of the comprehensive sign package that that entire regional Estrella Falls area has. I wouldn't be allowed to have them. And that's on my CCNRs, that comprehensive sign package. So, we need to make sure that going forward in other centers that come into play, that we are matching up, hey, we allow for these, you know, we would like you to have better directional signs, we'd like you to, you know, and try to, you know, line them up together. But for centers that are built today, that are having these issues, back to what you were saying, how do we define what those centers are? Because what's going to happen is so-and-so is going to say, well, they've got it over there on Litchfield, how come I can't have it over here on Estrella? Or somebody's going to say, I'm just saying, we're opening it up, that I don't know that it's not going to be a problem. So, I just leave it with that. I personally don't care for them.
You have a valid point. It is a very difficult subject. Mayor? It's wonderful. Yes, Cheryl?
I agree, it's a difficult subject, but I really think that there has to be a way to accommodate a reasonable pathway.
Why do we do this?
By limiting the number of days they can have them out, or what, I don't know what that is, but I really, really think that... what that is, but I really, really think that, I like them. I, I, I kind of feel like Wally does. They, they, they're, I don't like them once they get faded, and you can't tell what they said. So, you know, I, I-
Well, if you don't allow them to have them a long period of time up, they won't get faded. I mean, you have to, you have to put some guidelines, and I don't know. So how about if we send this portion back, Council, to staff, and let them rethink this one, and come up with something creative, with a timeframe, with designated areas? You know, there, if you look at the Power Center, I can't imagine in the Power Center, anybody needs it in the Power Center, we're talking about on Australia, yeah, on Pebble Creek Parkway.
This is a different topic, but I really wanted to say, I was really, what, something that I was really pleased to see they had made a change on. And that is, that the smaller businesses, just because by, if, if by the area of the business they have to put on a sign, they normally wouldn't get a 35-foot sign, but that that would be the minimum sign. I, I thought that was exciting.
That is.
I thought that was a great change, and a, and a great acknowledgement of the need for appropriate signage for a small business. I wanted to make sure that you under, I, I'm not critical. I mean, obviously, we pick out the things that we really think are, but I just wanted to, to compliment that, that, that particular item.
Cheryl, and I appreciate that. I think all of us agree on that one. That was a really a good part of it, that it got me excited about this. So anything else on the signage? Yes, Wally?
I, I understand that we're changing some of the perimeters for some of these centers. And I just hope that staff will work with those folks that do want to change and update their signage, and not, and, and help them accomplish whatever they're trying to do within our guidelines, so that they're not discouraged, that it's, that they perhaps won't be able to enlarge their sign, or make it more attractive, or whatever. Because just changing some of the monument signs in front of some of our, our retail sales areas, I think will make that area a little more alive, or a little more vibrant, and not be so lost, because we have so many of our shopping areas on corners that between the foliage, you just lose it all. You don't even know what's there. So I just appreciate y'all thinking out of the box, working with them, and, and helping them, so that they know we're just trying to do what's good for them, and good for the city.
Thank you for those comments. I, I agree. It was, it's a great job. I mean, it was a pretty big job to look at.
Yes.
And we really hadn't, I guess, we gave our opinions early on, and we had a few changes tonight, maybe, and, or questions, but it was a good job. We're moving forward on that. So, any other? Thank you very much. All right, what we're going to do now, it's 5:55, so do you want a, just a break after we open the meeting? Are you okay to go on? We're going to move then to the dais-
Okay.
For the regular meeting. This meeting is adjourned.